It's like all you.
Call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right, we'll open this evening with public input and we have someone here to offer prayer. Let them come on up.
May we pray. Holy Father, we ask your blessings upon this commission tonight as a deal with the business of our great city. And Father, we thank you for our city of Pittsburgh, for what it has to offer, what it has more to offer in the future. Thank you for our leaders, all of them. Give them strength, courage, and may they always seek your will and have spiritual guidance in all of their decisions. Be with all of us, our citizens, keep us safe through the holidays, and may we have a great and joyous time as we celebrate. We ask these things in thy precious name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public input? Come on up if you'll state your name and address.
Bruce Mullin. I live in Erie, but I own businesses here in Pittsburgh. Basically, just an update on the West 5th property. You know, I've talked to Quentin a couple times and thought I'd be here tonight to make a couple quick comments and then go from there. But basically, the gist of the property was after the risery development didn't come through, Quentin called and wanted to know if we were still interested. And the short answer is to that, yes. The long answer is I'm not prepared to honor my original proposal, basically because, two reasons. I'm looking at two other projects that have come up since that timeframe. And secondly, you know, interest rates have changed and everything else. So basically, the short answer is yes, I'm still interested. Am I prepared to honor the original proposal? No. Would I like to put together another proposal if the opportunity presents itself? Yes. So that, in a nutshell, is where we're at and what's going on with us.
Have you guys talked about a timeline at all or what that looks like?
Actually, I am swamped through the end of the year. And then basically, we stopped pricing out the original project once it was awarded to rise. So I don't even have current cost figures or anything else. As far as a definite timeline, I could have something to you in a month, two months. I don't know. I honestly don't know. I haven't got that far along with it. I've talked to one builder, I've got another to talk to and to see where we're at. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here for public input? If not, we will close public input and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda to be removed? If there are none, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote.
Genowitz?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McNay?
Aye.
Manzel?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion passes. Special presentation. We have with us this evening the Career and Technical Education Center of Southeast Kansas, Director Chris Mangarelli, who will be presenting a report on the growth of the CTEC program.
Mayor, members of the commission, it's hard to believe. It was five years ago, we stood before the commission and requested $300,000 to help launch the Career and Technical Education Center, or CTEC, because even then, we saw the trend toward jobs in the construction field, welding, those in the skilled trades that were being, the jobs that were being created locally. Pittsburgh City Commission stepped up at that time. $300,000, Crawford County did the same. And of course, the Bicknell Family Foundation also stepped up big time with a $1 million donation and really helped launch CTEC. And over that time, what we have seen is the impact that it's having on economic development. Commissioner McNay and I are on the Executive Committee. And even though that was the intended effect of launching CTEC, it's been remarkable, just the personal stories of the students themselves. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that tonight. As we look back over the last five years, really, the biggest step forward was when the CTEC Board brought on Chris Mangarelli, who has an extensive background in workforce education. And he's going to tell you the progress that they have made at CTEC and the kind of impact that they're having on our community. But please know that the city of Pittsburgh was one of the first to jump in the water on this and one of the big drivers of its success. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Chris Mangarelli.
Well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and get to say personally thank you to the city of Pittsburgh on behalf of our students. It has made a profound impact on lives. And it's fun to look at it from a big picture and see how we've grown. And I'll share our progress and our plans, as well as some personal stories, which is one of my favorite parts, is getting to share with you how we've impacted people's lives with this. CTEC connects motivated individuals with meaningful careers through educational partnerships. And so we have partnerships and we have our instructors. And as Blake had said, we're a very hands-on, construction trades, welding, masonry, HVAC type of program out there, which is much needed in not just schools in general, Crawford County, but everywhere. It's something that's really growing. But in addition to teaching those technical education skills, we also like to focus on the soft skills that we hear often, the work hard, be responsible, show up every day on time, being respectful, being teachable, being safe, being drug-free, and then of course perseverance. And so we work with our students on those skills, as well as the technical side of our training. As far as the numbers go, we have 70% of our students are high school students. And we serve every high school in Crawford County, which is really exciting. As it's grown, you can see the schools starting to send more and more students to us. And it's a great opportunity for students. And so 70% of our students are high school students. They're earning free college credits through Fort Scott Community College if they're taking those programs. And then, as far as growth goes, in 2016, we had 107 students at CTEC. Between 2016 and 2017, we brought the AutoTech program from Pittsburgh High School out. So we saw a significant jump to 178 students. And now, in the fall of 2018, we have 220 students coming to CTEC. And we see that growing. Word of mouth spreads and students are enjoying what they do and they start talking to one another. So we're real excited about how things are going with all of our students. This is Angela, and I should mention, all of these slides are pictures of our students. None of these are stock photos that we pulled from anywhere. Angela's interested in veterinary medicine and she's in the welding program, thinking that she'd be able to weld up her corrals someday. And so her story is in an annual report that we'll share with you when I'm finished. And you'll have all of this information and plenty more to go with it. Our current course offerings or programs, we have a welding, HVAC, carpentry, and masonry programs. And those programs, you can earn a certificate through Fort Scott Community College or you can earn an associate's degree in the carpentry or HVAC programs. And so depending on what they want to do, they can earn a certificate or associate's degree in those. The plant science is not a course as far as a certificate course, but we had a high tunnel or greenhouse donated and we've taken advantage of that. If you saw, I believe KOAM did a story. And we've donated now over 1,000 pounds of fresh produce to Wesley House. But we have students in there that are not going to go on to be a scientist, but love learning about plant science. And they'll use it probably to have their own garden someday. And it's just been a really positive part of our program, gives our kids a chance to give back to the community. And then of course, the automotive technology program is a Pittsburgh High School program, as I mentioned. This is Tyler. Tyler's one of those students that I can safely say we've made an impact with. He's a student, and we have a lot of students like this. If you give him a half a day of doing hands-on, so he goes to carpentry and then plant science, he can handle a half a day in the classroom. I was probably that way a little bit myself. And so he's a great student for us. But we're here to talk about what it costs for a student. A high school student doesn't pay anything for the college credits. It's zero cost to them. So Excel and CTE pays for their tuition and fees to Fort Scott. And then the funding that we receive from Kansas Crossing goes to scholarship, their consumable fee, which helps pay for two-by-fours and welding rod and those types of consumables. So our high school students pay zero. Our college students, because they have access to financial aid and work-study and those types of programs, will pay, will set up a scholarship fund for them to receive the consumable part of that through CTEC. And last year, we awarded $35,000, over $35,000. And I would expect us to award more as our enrollment, of course, continues to increase. Really quick, and this is just a broad overview of our budget. I'm more than happy to share a more detailed report if you're interested in it. Things that stand out, there's a finance, which we had to borrow some money, short-term, paid it off six months early, again, due to the generosity of this community. And I would see the construction and renovation part continue to maintain as we continue to look at what programs to add and how we're going to continue to maintain and improve our offerings. So that's kind of the progress we've made in the past few years. As far as our plan goes, and I really appreciate Dawn's leadership. When she joined our board, she started talking to us about a strategic plan along with another officer. And so we, I certainly appreciate that leadership and that direction. So we're starting a strategic plan initiative and we're going to focus on four areas. The development and communication, making sure that people know what CTEC is and how we can partner with them. The expanding programming, and we want to do that based on a needs assessment for this area, to be specific, and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. Student data, how do we know our students are successful? And do the employers, do the students have the skill they need when they get them? And then finally, we want to be good stewards, certainly with the generosity that has been shown us with our facility. This is Alan. Alan, if you've been in a fender bender lately and stopped at a local body shop here, you might have seen Alan. He does an internship with a local body shop, which is part of the idea of placing students. We want our students to be able to work in the field they're interested in. He's a fourth-year student with our AutoTech program. They love him at the body shop and he's learning a lot and loving what he's doing. And so that's part of what we want to do when we start looking at placing our students, is internships, apprenticeships. Kansas Works has a youth apprenticeship program that we would love to be a part of piloting in Kansas. And then we're going to have a recruiting fair this spring to give employers an opportunity to come to us and meet our students and see what we do. It's been exciting for me to say, when we say employer partnerships, this summer, I got to tour several of our manufacturing facilities, one even just a week ago, and absolutely loved seeing the industry here in Pittsburgh. It's exciting to see. And the last thing I want to share is a story. And rather than me tell it, I'm going to let Ashley tell her own story. This is one of our adult students at CTEC.
Before CTEC, I was with somebody that beat me up verbally, physically, mentally. He wouldn't let me go see my kids. He wouldn't, you know, let me do anything. I wasn't allowed to leave the house at all. I'd be lucky if I was allowed to get out of bed. Right after my daughter was born, I went into a major depression stage. I drank all the time. I was at the point where I was basically trapped at home. I couldn't even do anything without, you know, throwing up all the time. I mean, I literally couldn't even sit up without feeling like I was going to throw up. And I was like, okay, I'm done. I can't do this no more. I just turned away from it and went to the doctor, went to rehab. I looked in to get my GED and found CTEC. And it's just, it's been great since then.
I think CTEC is, it's all about developing a workforce and training students, which gives them some incredible opportunities. So ultimately, we're trying to get motivated individuals the training they need so that they can go out and be successful.
When I first came in here, I didn't really know much about carpentry. Honestly, the only thing I knew about carpentry was how to use a drill. And now I can, I mean, I've got my own little mini house out there. It means a lot to me coming out here. I look forward to it every day. A lot of people don't want to get up and go to work. And I'm like, I'm ready to get up and go to school.
It's important that we increase our numbers and that our students are going out and getting meaningful jobs and helping in the workforce, but also being successful themselves. And those numbers are important, I think. But beyond that, I would say that these individual stories, helping people like Ashley, and those stories happen every day too. And it's kind of nice to be able to help people. That's what drives, that's why I like to get out of bed in the morning and come to work, just because there's always someone I can help.
If it wasn't for CTEC, I'd probably be back in the same boat. And I mean, my kids are so much happier around me. I'm so much happier. I love it. I mean, it's amazing.
I think there's a lot to be said for Ashley and her resolve, her willingness to make a change in her life. But the city of Pittsburgh offered a lot to that in that she got her GED, went to Kansas Works, went to the Adult Education Center that was at CTEC, got her GED, started in these classes, and it's a life that's changed because of what we do out there. So besides providing great workers, we also get to make an impact on people. And I'm very grateful for your contribution to that and how the city of Pittsburgh really comes together to support CTEC and just people in general. So any questions that you might have?
Or would you like, then?
I'll get out of your way. I know I'm a little early. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Definitely shows that the investment the city made was a wise one and it's paying dividends. So thank you so much for the work you're doing.
I might just say one thing. I've taken several things out to this facility to have constructed. And they always do a wonderful job and they seem to really enjoy what they're doing. And I applaud you all for this.
Chris, you might talk a little about the community projects the kids do.
Oh yeah, and that's, it's one of the things that we have, we had an advisory council today with our, for our construction, where we have businesses come in. But that's one of the things that we started kind of making a focused effort on last year. It's been done some before, but we built a pirate ship playhouse for bid and it went up to auction in Community Health Center, purchased that. But then this last year, they provided the materials and we poured concrete and put up a gazebo right next to that for our students. We had a group of students pour a sidewalk for a disabled veteran in Franklin, one rainy day. And so they were out there to do that. And it was one of those things where we want to help people. I think it's valuable for our students to, when they went into Wesley House with the produce, I think they got to see how it makes an impact. And so we did the masonry work in the butterfly garden at Schlinger Park and those kinds of things. And so our kids take a lot of pride in that. And we have a couple more scheduled. I think we're going to do some work for a local school as well coming up. So we like being a part of the community in that way. And it's, it can be challenging because it's easy for certain people to say, hey, I've got a community service project, you could paint my house. And we don't want to be free labor, but we do like giving to our community. And so that works out really, really well for us to donate our time to the great community that we live in.
Chris, how's the space? When you started, you had 107 students. Now you're up to 220. I mean, you know, 1,000, how big are you going to get? What are you going to run out of space?
Well, I'll tell you, our welding program is growing significantly. And welding and carpentry and our HVAC program have all doubled in their first-year students. So we can, we can see from last year to this year, first-year growth has doubled in those areas. We added five welding booths last summer. And I don't know, we've got two classes of around 20 beginning welders. So next fall, we're going to have to address how we're going to take, because normally, we would take our beginning, two beginning welding classes and make one advanced. And so we're going to have to look at that. There's talk of if we can, if we do add on to the east with just a kind of a over, a lean-to or just an open roof space and pavement, we could move our masonry program and give carpentry a little more room that way. And then welding could move down. But we're looking at that, addressing that from a strategic plan aspect. Where do we want to grow and which way and how we need to address those? So I don't know, it's exciting though.
It's a problem to have, right?
Yep, yep.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the main agenda, the Don Gutteridge Sports Complex restroom and concession facilities. Consider the staff recommendation to award the bid for the construction of two new stick-built restroom and concession stand facilities in the Don Gutteridge Sports Complex in two tri-state construction of Pittsburgh, Kansas, based on their low bid of $407,757, to be funded by the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks Land and Water Conservation Fund and General Obligation Bond and Operating Funds. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before I start with this, I too would like to thank Chris and CTEC. I think he may have just stepped out. But he did mention the butterfly garden, but they also helped build, they helped Tri-State Construction do the masonry work on the RV Park restrooms and pavilion. And we have them, I believe, scheduled to work on Bochi Pits in Lincoln Park. So they have been very instrumental in the park system and so we're lucky to have them with us. So back to the Don Gutteridge and Sports Complex restrooms and concession stand. As you know, we brought this project, I brought this project to you in April and asked for approval to apply for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. We were awarded that grant. And then we have the obligation bond that was also authorized by the commission in October. So we put the proposals out and we received three proposals back from Crossland Construction, from Tri-State Construction, and from Arc Construction. Tri-State was the low bid meeting specifications. So we would, at this time, ask for approval to move forward with the two new restroom and concession stand projects at the Don Gutteridge Sports Complex. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And Erin Murphy with Tri-State is here also.
Kim, I had a question on the stick-built compared to block construction, about the life of the facility. Would it, would it be a better option to go with the block over the stick? Or is there much difference in the life of the?
Erin could probably answer that a little. I hate to put him on the spot, but a little better than I could. We looked at both options. Obviously, we were, budget was a concern. We figured that the stick-built would probably be just as, last just as long.
Okay, that's fine.
We do have some concerns with our block buildings and the mold and cracking that they have and trying to keep up with that. So we like the look of the stick-built with the Wayne Scotting better. So that's really why we were leaning towards that more inviting look.
I would just ask on the accessories, and it's probably not a contractor thing to add diaper changing.
Pardon?
To add diaper changing.
Oh, we can, we can add that in.
Yeah, men's and women's.
Yes. Proper feminists around here.
Got it, change order number one.
Thank you.
Dad, I'm capable of doing that as well, yes.
Are there any other questions?
There's no other questions. I move approval.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Kim. Downtown Advisory Board appointments. Appoint two members to at-large positions and one member to a downtown landowner position as members of the Downtown Advisory Board effective January 1st, 2019, and to conclude on December 31st of 2020.
Commissioners, thank you for having us. In front of you, you have two ballots. One is, the first one should be for one property owner that you have there. And the reason for that one first is because they also could be on the second ballot. So with the first ballot after the people are chosen, move to the second ballot and take a vote that way. We've received a resume for one of the applicants. And I know a few more of them are in the crowd here.
Short ballot first?
Short ballot, long ballot. So if, I'm not sure if any of them are here that are on the first ballot, the property owner ballot.
Ruth Ellen, Ruth Ellen, the red sweatshirt.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ellen Simpson. I'm the finishing touch. Many of you know me. Many of you have been in and bought things from me. Thank you very much. I do own a business in downtown Pittsburgh. And with that, I also own a building in downtown Pittsburgh. That building is not new. And it's been a challenge and a learning experience to take care of a century-old building because they do require a lot of maintenance. It has been interesting through the years to look at the different issues that face it as a property owner and a building owner. I also now own another building that is newer, but it too has issues even though it's not a century old. For those of you who are not acquainted with me, well, I did come here in 1981 by choice. I was a young, energetic, 24-year-old naive person. I have now matured into an older and hopefully wiser person with some history and some knowledge. And I'm not nearly as naive as I was, but I think what I bring to the board and the advisory board is the history of where we've progressed from 1981 to where we are today. My involvement in the downtown area has been consistent since we came here. I was on the Downtown Merchants Association in the very beginning. Some of you may remember part of that. I think that evolved into the Downtown Business Association to encompass all of different kinds of people that are involved in the downtown area. After that, we were a Main Street city for a while. That was in the last century, the early part of the 90s. I was on that for the continuation of that, serving as president as one year. And my major accomplishment was we got rid of parking meters. For those of you who know what parking meters are, I helped to smash them. So I've gone through a lot. And then nothing happened as downtown grouped together. And about two years before the development of the Downtown Advisory Board, a loose group got together that numbered many people with many different ideas. And I went to all of those meetings and of course, kind of voiced my opinion because I'm kind of long-winded. And then that evolved into the Downtown Advisory Board. And I was one of the first at-large members that served a one-year term on that and then was reappointed to a second-year term on that. And I'm not real sure exactly where I fell because I'm an owner of property and I'm also an owner of a business. And I don't know if they have a category for old people, but I fall into the baby boomer generation as to finding, kind of, even out what's going on. Because I've been through a lot, I've seen a lot. I can understand why some of the things are done the way that they are, which if you're new to town, you may not understand. Why you can throw parade candy from a moving vehicle in a parade, that it's actually an ordinance. And so there's different things that go on that I kind of look at myself as the historian of the bunch to explain some of the reasons that we have the ordinances that we do. I've been through many, many city commissioners. I have been through many, many different people in the offices. I've seen the changes from an emphasis over here to an emphasis over there, totally opposite. I represent a whole lot of different groups besides owning a business and having employees and having buildings that take care of. I also represent that baby boomer generation because we think differently. When we opened and took out a $10,000, oh my heavens, bank loan at 18% interest, I couldn't sign for it on my own because I was female. It was required that I have a male signature. So things have changed a few, just a little bit in the last few years. I'm also a member of one of the houses of worship that are in the downtown area and is also an old, 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 old building that requires a lot of maintenance. And I'm part, like I said, I'm part of that baby boomer generation. And we have a different view of the world in our 60s than those who are in their 40s and those are in their 30s and those are in their 20s. and those are in their 30s and those are in their 20s. And I think it's real important that we listen to the ideas of all those groups and come together as an advising board. It's not necessarily going to always agree on everything that's presented to us, but we have to have the ability to listen to the different sides of it and agree to disagree sometimes, but come to a consensus as a board. There've been some issues that have not been unanimous, but the board has come together and all of us on the board have accepted the board's decision, even if it wasn't our personal decision. Are there any questions? Because I just rattled off a whole bunch of stuff, and I have more written down. If you have questions, I would be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Okay, no, thanks.
Thanks, Ruth Ellen.
Do you guys have extra ballots?
Yes.
So, we need you to cast a vote for either John Mitten or Brad Snow this time to break a tie. Okay, our downtown landowner position goes to John Mitten, so please scratch his name off, is he on the second ballot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so scratch his name off of the long ballot and please select your top two choices on the long ballot.
Do we have members here that can speak themselves on the second ballot?
I refuse to vote until I hear from the committee.
If anybody wants to do over after the members speak.
It's only fair.
Yep, no, that's a good, it's just new. Not used to the public input, but it's a good thing. I apologize for that.
That's good.
Hello, my name's Amy Sawyer, and I'm the Director of Production at Names and Numbers. I'm a Pittsburgh transplant, I've lived here for 17 years now. I got hired at Names and Numbers when I graduated from Pitt State, and I've stayed. I'm looking for ways to get more involved in the community, and I feel like this is a great start. I also feel like my generation is the future, and what better way than to lead by example? Do you have any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Heather Orshlin, and just a little bit about me, if you're not familiar with me, I own Repurpose Boutique downtown, across from 505, and I was open a year in June, so we've been open about a year and a half. I do not live in Pittsburgh, but I'm a Pitt State graduate, and my husband is the Vice President of Entoplast, formerly known as Pitt Plastics. He's been there to be 30 years, March 1st. So, we have a lot of connections to Pittsburgh, even though we don't reside in Pittsburgh. That was one reason I brought my business over here. Repurpose Boutique that I own has been in business since 2012, so I have a location in Carthage, and then I opened the one over here, and then actually, when I leave here, I'm setting up a holiday pop-up shop at the Joplin Mall until Christmas also. So, I'm one of those people that is very involved. When I was called and asked to go for this or be one of the people, I really, to be honest, didn't know exactly how it worked, but I said sure. I just want to say that, wow, I've been very impressed with your downtown when I opened over here. I will say, when I first went out, I'm a very shop-small-minded person. In today's world, if you own a small business, there is no way to compete with big box unless you make your store an experience. If you don't follow me on Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, Facebook, we have all of them, then you probably don't realize that, but we're open Thursday night till 8:00, just to give you an idea. Like, this Thursday night, you bring in your stockings, you stuff them for buy-one-get-one half, we have a local person playing the guitar and singing. Next Thursday night, I have a girl that does massages from one of your local businesses, and you get a five-minute massage with a $50 purchase. I'm very big on cross-promoting. Our first-year celebration, we gave free ice cream to every customer, and it was from your little ice cream shop down the street, and then I paid them for all the ice cream I gave away. I love that kind of stuff. I do that at my Carthage store. To me, shopping small, my goal for your town, if I was on this board, is to bring that piece to the table, my experience and my knowledge for growing my business the way I have. I do feel like I have a gift for marketing and social media. I'm great at getting people involved. A year ago, when I came over, I went across the street and said, hey, what do you do here for a holiday open house? And they said, I don't know, everybody does their own thing. And so, I started last year, if you participate or remember it, it was a holiday downtown shopping, and I was so excited and impressed, I went to every business on foot, didn't send an email, I went in with my piece of paper and went door-to-door and said, I'm Heather, I own Repurpose, let's all do this together. Every single person I invited but one participated. We had a huge holiday open house with punch cards and people, and downtown was full. This year, I got a phone call from two ladies who were involved with your Kiwanis and your Circle K, wanted to piggyback on my holiday thing. I said, great, I love help, come on, let's do it. So, we met, it was called a sippin' shop. If you participated a couple weeks ago, they had it all downtown, your bars, your restaurants got involved this year, we had bracelets, the $20 went to Kiwanis, we had transportation to drive your grandma up and down Broadway while she was sippin' wine and tasting food and buying stuff at my store. It was awesome, it was so fun and so cool, and I was so excited to be a part of it, and I hope you see from that the way I operate. I'm not a person that says, this is my idea, I'm doing it all. I did half as much this year, but more people got involved, and it grew and it changed. That's what your town's going to have to do to keep your downtown booming and growing. I would, my passion for you all is that a year to two years from now, you refer to it as, hey, have you had the Pittsburgh boutique experience? Have you gone to Pittsburgh, Kansas? That we become the boutique district, that it is a place that you want to go, that people from Atkinson and Olathe and that a group of women want to get a van and bring them all to Pittsburgh for a Saturday because you have such a downtown experience to shop. And if we all work together, it's not a competition, the competition is all of us against Best Buy. It's to get everybody to shop small, to keep your money in your community. And I think it's working, what we're doing, because Saturday, I was not open Black Friday. There's one of me, and I have two stores. So, I do Friday in Carthage, and I do Saturday in Pittsburgh, have the same deals, I had 50 people lined up at my door at 8:00 a.m., then I had 50 more lined up at 1:00 because it was a different coupon, because I like to keep it going. And I did, and I don't usually share numbers, but I will because the tax money goes to your town. I did $13,000 last year on that Saturday, and I did 22 this year. So, obviously, I know how to crank it out and how to get people to come. So, that's my, what I bring to the table. I don't live here, I don't have this address, but my husband has a great job, and I pay a lot of money to the tax system and to your town. So, in a sense, I'm contributing, believe me. I am also in the process of closing on the building that Mike Sitner owns between 505 and Audacious, and that's my new home-to-be, fingers crossed. My appraisal didn't come in exactly how it was supposed to, good for me, bad for him, so we're trying to get that ironed out, but, which I think you're having that a lot with your downtown booming. But I, I love what I do. I don't have to work, so I have a passion for what I do. Schoolteacher for 10 years before, now I do this. I'm one of those people that the more plates you give me, the faster I shell floor. So, that's me. I'm Heather Orshlin on your little paper.
Can you guys just fill out a new ballot and all?
Yep.
I think it'd be awkward if we...
Sue's coming up. Jumping the gun here.
Hi, I'm Sue Warner, and I'm one of the founding members of Art Forms Gallery and became active in downtown as a result of that. I also own an online business and market all over the world, and I feel like I bring to the table experience as a businesswoman, and I'm very excited to see the direction that Pittsburgh is taking. And through my online business, I've traveled all over the United States and seen, you know, the fabulous things that are happening in other cities, and like to bring ideas like that to Pittsburgh. And so, I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
I really like this, by the way, because having people stand up there and talk is, gives so much more detail than the applications.
Or a resume.
That we see, or a resume, but I think, yeah, I think I would like this in the future, maybe put our three-minute limit on the speaking time. But, thanks, everybody, and I hope that everybody who did apply continues to be involved anyway with the board and everything that they're doing, so.
Because the Downtown Advisory Board, among others, has committees on it that people don't necessarily have to be on the board to serve with, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Cool. Thanks, Darren, for your hard work.
I'm not good. I'm not getting up till it's clear. It's like I'm cutting everybody off. Okay, we're shooting for two, see if we can get a majority. Okay, we have Heather Orshlin and Amy Sawyer.
That's why it's important to come.
Yeah, motion to approve John Mitten as the landowner and Amy Sawyer and Heather Orshlin as the at-large.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations, everyone. And finally, on our agenda, the date for the second city commission meeting in December. The second city commission meeting of December is scheduled for Tuesday, December 25th, otherwise known as Christmas. Discussion is needed to determine if the city commission members prefer to cancel the meeting and reschedule the meeting for an alternative date, or to cancel it altogether and not reschedule it.
Commissioners, we have basically put down everything that we've got as a city that we want to, we want to or have to finalize for this year, and it wouldn't be the smallest meeting we've ever had, but we could easily get away with having everything else on December 11th. The biggest change from our planning would probably be to have the recommendation on the electricity feasibility study, just hold off and do that in, on January 8th of next year, which I think honestly, presenting it and then letting it sit for four or five weeks probably isn't the greatest idea, and it allows the consultant even more time to pull together the final report. So, we would have a busy meeting on December 11th, but we could easily, that would be the staff's recommendation, would just be to cancel it. The other option, if you don't want to cancel, would be to have a second meeting preferably on December 18th, which would be one week after the December 11th.
With the electricity report being moved, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'm in favor of canceling the 25th and doing it all on the meeting in December.
I'm okay with cancellation, I think.
Okay, we don't need anything on that, do we?
So, we're going to, is it the consensus to cancel the meeting?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, why don't you since, yeah.
Okay, I will look for a motion to cancel the meeting for the 25th altogether.
So, move?
Yes.
Is that a second?
Oh, yes. You said altogether, I thought we were all at the same time.
Oh, no, no, no. All together cancellation, not all together now. And we're the Beatles, okay. So, it's been moved and seconded in some form or other to cancel the meeting on the 25th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We will not have a second meeting in December. Are there any non-agenda reports or requests from Darren or staff?
We have two. The first one, we want to bring everybody's attention and update them on the process for appointing new commissioners. According to Tammy, our city clerk, we have the form available tomorrow for anybody that wants to apply. It's obviously on the website, www.pittks.org, or call City Hall, come into City Hall. The deadline is December 5th at noon, which is a Wednesday, and we are encouraging you to make the appointment on December 11th so we don't have to have... Jeremy was very nice and submitted his resignation effective December 31st to City Hall last week, so that piece of business has been taken care of. Congratulations on becoming a county commissioner in 2019, we will miss you, but we do have a vacancy to fill. So, any questions on that process or any comments? Thanks, Tammy, for getting all that straightened out.
Is there going to be a news blurb in the paper?
Press release. And what is the process? Do, are there, I know on the school board, you know, we had questions and they answered them, and I haven't looked at the application, so the candidates just share with us and then we vote, or?
Quinn, Quinn, I've done those unfilled terms, which is twice, we filled out a, basically a resume.
I guess I could look at the application.
I don't have it in front of me, is it, do you have it memorized?
I don't. Jay actually prepared it.
You better come to the mic, because people at home may want to know how to apply, Jay.
Everybody's jumping at the bit to be a commissioner.
I wouldn't call it a resume, but its application is specifically designed to give you all a sense of where they stand, why they feel that they're qualified, and then give them an opportunity to explain, you know, some freedom to explain why they're interested in what they would do as commissioners. So, it's online, you can, we'll put it online tomorrow, so you'll be able to see.
And then we'll get those before the meeting so we can study them and come prepared. Perfect.
Sounds like a plan. That's, that's the plan, and we're sticking to it. The second order of business, and I'll probably, Jay, if you just stand up there, I'll let you introduce Jerry Warren.
Yeah, we, as I think you all know, we've engaged a consultant to assist us in looking at the feasibility of creating municipal electric utility. We have a lot of decisions to make or a lot of things to consider when we're doing something like that. We found through the American Public Power Association, a person who is well-qualified to do that, who has indeed done a municipalization in the past successfully, and then ran it for seven years, like making your pie and then eating it, all right? He's had to do that. So, and we are fortunate to have him with us. His name, his name's Jerry Warren, and he has nothing prepared for tonight, but we did want to introduce you to him and let you know that if you see him wandering around, that's what he's doing here, right? Or if you see him driving around, actually, he's spending a lot of time outside of the city right now. There's a lot of very technical issues that he's familiar with, and as far as separation from the current provider, if we need to, and he's going around and doing that work as well as preparing some of the final estimates for the financial feasibility of doing that. So, we just wanted to make an introduction.
That's all, stop that.
If there's nothing else to come before the commission, I will... If there's nothing else to come before the commission, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, we are adjourned.